Good evening, welcome to the Southbridge Town Council meeting of Monday, October 29th, 2018. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) for the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, and this world is a greater than just that.
Roll call, Madam Secretary.
Counselor Adams.
Present.
Counselor O'Clare. Counselor Daniel.
Present.
Counselor DePietro. Counselor Jovan.
Mr. President.
Counselor Manah. Counselor Morales.
Present.
Counselor Nash.
Present.
Counselor Steves.
Present.
Thank you. Seven present, two absent. Agenda item three, A, consider accept the joint redevelopment authority town council minutes of Monday, October 15th, 2018. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any errors, corrections, or omissions? Counselor Manah.
I'm going to abstain because I was not at this meeting.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Adams.
If I'm not mistaken, it should be on the second line. Counsel Chambers.
Okay. That is correct. Counsel Chambers. Any further corrections? All those in favor as amended? Opposed? One abstention. Counselor Manah. Agenda item B, consider accept the town council meeting minutes of Monday, October 15th, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Any errors, corrections, or omissions? Counselor Steves.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There's a few things. In most of my spelling, minor spelling things, agenda item number five, due should be D-U-E. And number six, red ribbon should have an extra B in it. Down on item number 12, it's a purchase and sale agreement, not purchase of sale. And also in that particular item, I believe, I believe Monique didn't abstain, you voted no on that particular part of it.
What, I can't.
Item number 12, when the, when the motion, when Dave made the motion to, to strike reimburse insurance payment for FY 2019, and you voted no on that, if I remember correctly, didn't you? You didn't abstain against it?
Yes.
I didn't abstain on that.
Yeah, you voted no, that's what I thought.
I voted no.
Okay.
Thank you.
But you, but you, but everybody voted in favor of the final motion. In agenda, in item number 13, it's, I don't know, but eight lines down, Town Manager San Angelo should be said. The third line from the bottom, it should say Counselor Steves asked if the FAA would provide any funding.
Yep.
And there's also several references to John Pulawski, the spelling, should be P-U-L-A-W-S-K-I. And, I think, oh, also, agenda item 28, the last section, to free up firefighters to only respond to fire and ambulance calls, that actually goes to the agenda item above it, which is already mentioned, so it should be stricken from there completely. And, at the bottom of agenda item 32, the third line up, fourth is misspelled, should be F-O-R, and wave is W-A-I-V-E. And in agenda item 33, the second, the last paragraph, it says Counselor Dambs, it should be Counselor Daniel, and Acting Chief Norman did without any. And that's, that's it.
Any further corrections? Counselor Adams.
I'm not sure if Counselor Steves mentioned it on the second line where seven, seven, 7:05 PM, the last meeting right before that ended about 7:10, according to our minutes.
Okay.
So it just needs to be adjusted to 7:10. And that was it.
Okay, thank you. Now, I think, and finally, agenda item to vote to enter executive session, I believe that should be 35, not 23, because that's the last item, so it should be 35. Right. Any further corrections, errors, or omissions? All those in favor as amended? Opposed? Abstained? Counselor O'Clare abstains, just for the record, Counselor DePietro and Counselor O'Clare are present for this meeting. Agenda item 3B, consider accept the joint school committee town council meeting minutes of October 9th, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Any corrections, errors, or omissions? Counselor Manah.
I will be abstaining from this as well as I was in order at this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Morales.
Thank you, I will also be abstaining.
Thank you. Counselor Daniel.
I also will be abstaining.
Thank you.
Okay.
Counselor Steves.
I mean, I have a few corrections. Actually, in this case, since Max did them, should we just send them to him? Since Mary didn't do them?
Uh...
Or should we just announce them now?
Just announce it and we'll forward it to them.
There are just several, there were just several points in here where there were items that were, that were actually discussed at some length that weren't, that weren't reflected in the minutes. Because I asked several other questions that are not mentioned, and I noticed, noticed, for example, that Mr. Bishop also mentioned that the council needs to get, get detailed line item budgets to oversee Stephen, et cetera, that's, that's not mentioned specifically. All right. So if I could, Counselor Steve, just to show you.
If you want to draft those, what you believe should be added, we'll postpone this and we'll move it over to the next week's meeting, and we can add it all.
Okay.
What's amended, so that way, we'll just draft what we believe should be added, rather than have it reflect to the secretary here who was not present to do those minutes.
Right, okay. I'll send them back.
Do I have unanimous consent for that?
Yes.
All set?
Okay.
Thank you. Agenda item four, subcommittee reports, General Government, Counselor Steves.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, we just met just before this meeting, it was one agenda item, which is the item number 13 on our current agenda, I'm sorry, not, not that one, it's number 17 on our agenda. And we, we unanimously approved doing so, and I will discuss it when we get there.
Thank you. Department of Public Works, Counsel DePietro, I know you weren't here for that meeting, so just, I'll just note that I did chair the meeting for Counselor DePietro. The items that were discussed are on tonight's agenda, and just as a point of information, we do have a meeting scheduled for November 1st at 6:00.
This coming Thursday.
Yep.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Anything else you want to add?
No, I want to thank you very much for having me that night, we had a family hospital thing, and...
Certainly understandable.
Much appreciated.
Okay.
Much appreciated.
Thank you. Education Human Services, Counsel Nash.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Joint meeting of the Education Human Services Subcommittee and Town Council was held on October 23rd. Two action items are on tonight's agenda that resulted from favorable recommendations of that subcommittee, they are items number nine and number 10 tonight. We also have a meeting scheduled for this Thursday, November 1st, at 6:00 PM. Thank you.
Thank you. Plan Development, Counsel Adams.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Next meeting will be 30 October, 6 o'clock, that's tomorrow evening. We did not have a meeting since our last town council meeting. That's all I have.
Thank you. Agenda item E, Protection of Persons and Property.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Can you hear me okay? This is working.
There you go.
There we go. I have a PPP meeting planned for tomorrow night, October 30th, at 7:00 PM. I am going to request that a recording secretary be there. I do not have a recording secretary, this is going to be a long meeting, I feel, and I am not going to be able to, I don't have anybody voted in as a secretary, so it's hard for me to take minutes and run the meeting. And I would request that a recording secretary be there for me tomorrow night. Please. I guess I'm begging.
Okay. We'll discuss that further. I did chair the last meeting of PPP, so I do understand how hard it is, we'll take it under advisement and see what we can do. If not, I'll take the minutes if I have to, if we don't have the ability, availability to do that. I would just ask, going on to minutes, we do have a number of minutes that are outstanding by subcommittee chairs, I do understand the difficulty in getting those, but some of those are outstanding over a month, so if we could please have those ready to us by November, November, our next meeting is November 26th, so if we could have all those minutes updated by November 26th.
November 26th or November 5th?
November 26th. I'm giving you a month to, all outstanding minutes to get into the office for approval by November 26th. I think that's fair, because those are public documents, so, given the fact that our next meeting is November 5th, I would not expect you to try to get them within the next four days, especially given the fact that we have other meetings, but I think November 26th should be fair to have those to us, okay?
Oh, that's fine. Yeah, I know you're looking at me. Hey, I have a couple.
Oh, no, Counsel DePietro, I'm not, I'm not pointing you out, I'm, I'm just saying, it's just...
I'm begging for the few two, so...
Counsel Steves, yeah, I wasn't going to signal anybody out.
It's okay, no, hey, we're busy, I mean, we have...
I do appreciate it, but they are public documents, so we do have to make sure that we're on top of it. And I understand how hard it is, and I just don't want it to slip through the cracks that, six months from now, we're still chasing minutes, so, just got to set some kind of guideline for that. Okay. Chairman's announcements. I did receive a letter indicating that there was a public hearing in the town of Charlton relative to Nat, Tennessee Gas, I believe, Natural Gas Liquidification Storage and Truck Loading Facility that they're looking to put in the town of Charlton. This notice came to the town of Southbridge as we are butters. This, there will be a sitting board, which will conduct a public comment hearing on the proposed project on Tuesday, November 13th, 2018, at 7:00 PM, in the Charlton Municipal Office's Board of Selectmen Meeting Room, 37 Main Street, Charlton, Mass. At the public comment hearing, the company will present an overview of the proposed project. Public officials and the public will then have an opportunity to ask questions and provide comments about the project. It will be recorded by a court reporter. Looks like they're going to, this system would be capable of producing approximately 250,000 gallons of LNG, liquidified natural gas, a $100,000 gallon storage tank, and it will be allowable for them to offload it into trucks, so, that's on Route 20 in Charlton, I believe they're looking to put that. Counsel Manah.
So what could, if I may, Mr. Chair, does it say what that, the project is associated with? Why, why are they doing that?
It just says it's...
Is it connected with any projects in Charlton?
Not that I'm aware of, it just says that it's, I'll make a copy for you, gladly.
I would like to have a copy, please.
The facility will be at 249 St. Bridge Road, Route 20 in Charlton. They're looking to take natural gas from an existing underground Tennessee gas pipeline company in Charlton, transport the gas to the facility via new underground pipeline, approximately 1.5 miles long. At the facility, the natural gas would be cooled to a liquid state, stored as a liquid on-site, and then transported by truck to gas company customers such as National Grid. So that's what they're looking to put on Route 20, so. All right? So this is public information. Also, just as a note to my fellow colleagues up here, I've just pointed, Counsel Nash, we will be looking to have a proposal about the wastewater management RFP. Just a point of information, I've asked him to sit as a council representative to review that, given his experience in wastewater management, so that he could be brief us when that comes before council. Also, just want to announce that the Southbridge Lions Club has partnered with Cops and Kids in a toys, toy drive for Christmas. Previously, the Lions Club had partnered with the Marine Corps League, but I believe there was some issues going on with that, and the Lions Club is now partnering, being a member of the Lions Club, I do know that, we've had discussion about it, that Deputy Chief Dinghy, who's very involved with this Cops and Kids program, they've partnered out so that all these toys will come to local, our local community, so just be on the lookout for that, that the drive will have boxes coming out shortly at locations, we've posted on social media, I'm sure we'll redo it, but we're looking to any new unwrapped, nonviolent toys, and all toys will benefit all the local families, so we look forward to that, and I'll give more information, I'm sure other councils will. That is all I have for tonight. Town Manager, announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, I just want to remind people that from October 23rd to the 31st is Red Ribbon Week. I know that a lot of people are seeing ribbons all around town, it really, the purpose of the ribbons is to educate people about the issuance of the dangers of substance abuse. Obviously, there's a problem all throughout our country as it relates to opioid and other illegal drugs, and I want to thank Town Council once again for their support in the advisory committee's work to try to educate people as much as possible. You'll see people with the red ribbons tonight. I especially want to thank the school system, it's been phenomenal in terms of, of educating students about this issue. They've done a tremendous amount of work with pledge cards, which are cards that are basically a pledge between parents and children not to do illegal drugs. They've been having Red Ribbon Week, there's banners, 14 banners scattered all throughout town to educate people about this process, there's been newspaper articles, so it's been really, really, I think, positive in terms of trying to get the information out to people about, not only the issue, but how they can get help as well, so I think that's really, really good. The chairman talked a little bit about the fact that we are going to be soon looking to develop a new contract between the town of Southbridge and our wastewater treatment, and a wastewater treatment vendor, and we are putting on RFP this Thursday, the evaluation team, including Counsel Nash, will be looking at one of the proposals we got by one of the vendors, and evaluating on that, but before, obviously, because before it's going to come to subcommittee for the cost of whatever the contract's going to be, so you're going to see this again in more detail after we review the request for proposal. We actually need a funding source for, for paying for the vendor, and eventually for the process of going through to hire a new consultant to operate the company, so, that process is something we started, we want you to be aware, and again, we appreciate Counsel Nash because he has a wide range of knowledge in this particular area, so I think it'll be a real asset to this particular committee. And that is all I have tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Presentations, we do not have any presentations this evening. Citizens Forum, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the town council this evening?
Good evening, thanks. Denise Clements, 128 Country Club Place. It is that time of year again. The holidays are just around the corner, and we've been quite busy at the workshop, getting things ready for the town. But before I get into the parade and tree lighting, I would like to point out something that took place today that was kind of a prelude to everything that's, that's going to happen in the next few weeks. We planted a town holiday tree. Personally, I'll call it a Christmas tree, but for the benefit of those who prefer not to, we will say it's a holiday tree. Generous donation made by the Southbridge Credit Union, happened, you guys accepted it, and finally a tree was found, it's a beautiful 16-foot Norway spruce, and it was planted this morning, bright and early, delivered just after 7:00 AM to the town common, and the DPW came with dozers and shovels and pretty much everything else that we needed to get that tree, get the whole dog, and get the tree planted. Special, special thanks go out to Lenny Laporte from Laporte Electric, who came and reworked a lot of the electrical conduits and stuff that need to be done in light of the trees that were taken down. You might have noticed that a lot of the firs, the old firs, had to come down for disease purposes, and so he showed up in the rain and made sure that things are right and that tree can be illuminated this year, as well as others. And also, special thanks goes out to Dennis Benoit from Benoit Landscaping, who, again, you know, another business here in this community, who came out and jumped in the hole, and his, of course, his business being tree planting and everything else, gave some good pointers to our DPW crew, and made sure that the, the tree was standing upright and well cared for this morning, so they worked probably till noon time getting things done, and, and beyond, as far as the electrical went, so, big kudos to all who helped. DPW workers were awesome, very positive, the director was out there making sure that they were doing what they had to be done, had to be done, and again, we cannot thank Southbridge Credit Union enough for having the foresight to say, geez, why don't we plant a real tree now that there's some spots, more open spots at the common, and, and why don't we have our tree lighting there? And that segues into the holiday visions and what we've been working on. So, we now have a tree, it will, we will no longer cut a tree, have a tree donated, and erect it somewhere in the middle of town, we will now keep that tree on the common as our yearly tree lighting tree. So, we have been working hard in the workshop, creating new things, you'll see new stuff on the common, you'll see new stuff throughout town, and also, of course, renovating all those other items that Rudy DiGogrio so lovingly made all those years ago, and continued until his death a few years back. So this year, we are calling our, it's the Holiday Parade and Tree Lighting with a new location at the common. The parade this year, and we encourage anyone who's interested to have a float, come on down, all you have to do is decorate your car, your truck, if you have a trailer, you can just walk, decorate yourself, and participate. It will happen Saturday, November 24th. We will start this year at, on Elm Street, basically between the town hall and the fire station, just like the Memorial Day Parade, we will start there, and we will head down Main Street, and there we will light the tree for the first time. And we hope that you will join us, we once again will have Santa photos, Santa will be there for the children and the adults alike, a village photo will take pictures for $5, from 5:30 to 7:30, approximately. We will have cocoa and cookies again from the conference center, we have some wonderful entertainment lined up, again, The Lamas, that was a big hit last year, and Act Two Ministries Victorian Carolers, those items along with Santa are being sponsored by our own Southbridge Cultural Council, which is a local agency supported by the Massachusetts Cultural Council, which is a state agency, so we thank them for, again, wanting to participate and help us out financially. We will have Ace of Clubs DJ, and this year, we're told that the high school chorus and band will participate, so we're pretty excited about that, because we have not been able to get them together, and we're looking forward to them participating this year. There'll be crafts and games for the kids and adults, I guess, if you want to play, and of course, a little bit of fried dough, hot dogs, kettle corn and such will be for sale as we did for the first time last year, and everybody seemed to enjoy that, they sold out of all those goodies early. So, what can you do to help in the meantime? This is all happening Saturday, November 24th, but we still could use some help at the warehouse and distribution. We mention this every year, our big distribution weekends are coming up, starting this weekend, Saturday and Sunday, we'll be working from 8:00 to 4:00, basically. For those who would like to participate, you can go to our Facebook page and get information on the Southbridge Holiday Visions Facebook page, you can email myself, or give me a phone call, 508-277-4494, and if you can't find me that way, somebody will tell you how to get to me, but we would love to have more participation. If you have a pickup truck, and you would like to help load things and drop them off in town, we will direct you where to go. If you just want to show up at, say, 9:00 on the common on Saturday with your pair of work gloves, or whatever it is, just dress for the weather, and we will be out there, unless it's pouring rain, we will be out there working for the next two days, so we hope that you will join us. The warehouse is open at 8:00 that morning, we'll be starting loading there, and then we will go to the common, and then proceed to finish everything else in town, hopefully in the next two weekends. So, again, there's a lot of information online or by phone calls. I have to also shout out to the SVP, the Southbridge Business Partnership, they have taken ownership to this event as well, they are partnering up with us, and we are grateful for their help that they're giving us, so they, they will be participating in the setup and in a few financial areas as well, so, big shout out to all the businesses in Southbridge who are helping us out this year. Please, come out, have a good evening, you know, enjoy the caroling, enjoy the camaraderie in town, it's, it's a wonderful event, and we hope to see you. If you have any questions, comments, if you can help spread the word, like us on our Facebook, whatever it takes, let the people know. We had about 700 or so last year, and we're looking forward to even bigger and better this year, so, I think that's about it. Oh, so is there any questions on that, on the holiday vision stuff?
No questions.
Okay, great. I'm, one other, take off that hat, and now I'm just going to be a citizen. I was a little bit concerned tonight, I see on that back table an entire table full of brochures that say vote yes on question one, all kinds of paraphernalia from, maybe from the forum the other night, and that's fine, but it should not be there. There's no vote no's, there's only vote yes, and I don't believe that belongs in the town hall at this time, so I'm asking it be removed.
Thank you, Counsel.
Thank you.
Any questions? No, thank you, Counsel, Ms. Clements. Okay. Agenda item nine, vote to appoint, oh, I'm sorry, is there anybody else from the audience that wishes to address the council? Anyone else? Seeing none. Agenda item nine, vote to appoint Anna Smith as the temporary recycling coordinator to be funded through the landfill reimbursement fund, from the time the landfill closes to the initiation of landfill capping at the current rate of pay not to exceed $25,000.
Second.
Discussion? Counselor Nash.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. This particular agenda item was taken up at our most recent EHS subcommittee meeting. There was a brief within the draft minutes that Counselor Adams sent through the town manager's office. In, in short, and I'll defer to the town manager if anyone prefers, very quickly, the wording for the agenda item may sound a little bit funny, but just to be clear, this particular position is, as recycling coordinator, something that we did actually have, maybe with a little bit different responsibility at one point. The reference to Ms. Smith is because, as the landfill monitor, that role will be going away at the point that the landfill closes, however, we would like to retain Ms. Smith to work once the capping begins, so, there would be a gap, there would be, be the potential for laying off Ms. Smith on paying associated unemployment costs, things of that nature. So, the $25,000 would be a, pretty much not to exceed sort of number, and we don't like doing that, I understand, but at her current rate of pay, and three days per week, we would be in the $20,000 to $25,000 range if that differential between landfill closure and capping went as far as six months, so. With that, I'll defer to the town manager or to the inspections director, as you prefer. Thank you.
Counsel Steves, you have a question?
I did, actually, a couple of quick questions. One is related to that, because I was at that meeting too, and this is probably something I should have asked, then I honestly didn't think of it.
Speak into the mic.
Okay. This is something I probably should have asked at the subcommittee meeting, but I honestly didn't think about it. Was this advertised?
The answer is no.
Okay, because I can totally understand wanting to, wanting to avoid the unemployment cost. Was there, does, do you have any idea what the unemployment cost would actually be?
No, actually, no, we did not calculate it, and you're correct, we didn't advertise it for the reason you suspected, because it's a temporary position, it's only going to be here for a couple of months while we're transitioning between, between the time the landfill closes and time for the, actually, the cover of the landfill going in.
I got that, I got that.
So it's a few-month period, it's not a permanent job. This was the Director of Inspeccial Services way of avoiding to pay the cost of unemployment, at the same time keeping this person who is a real asset to the landfill for us, who has a tremendous amount of knowledge in place, so that when it comes time in a few months we need her, she's still there, we don't want her to leave and go to some other job or that situation, so, we thought this would be the best way in the short term to resolve this issue, and, and obviously, as you know, with the issues of recycling, the Chinese government has, has made it very, very difficult in terms of, for them to accept recyclers, the percentages went up really high, close to like, almost to 80% or, or higher, so this is one way, we think we can utilize her knowledge and expertise to increase the amount of actual recycling that are put in people's pails versus garbage, and, and serve so we don't have our trash, our recycling in turn rejected, so, but if you have any other further questions I can ask the inspection directors to, to get more into that.
Well, to follow that, so, so is the plan then, I'm assuming then, would the plan be to keep this recycling coordinator once she goes back to cap, to deal with the capping stuff, then, then we'll actually advertise and look for somebody more permanent?
I think the intention is to drop the position, but Andy, you want to relate to what your thoughts long-term is, or?
We have a funding source that can carry this position for several years, so it would be my intention to see the effectiveness of this position.
Okay.
And if I see some measurable effectiveness, or some positive effectiveness, I would possibly be coming back to the council to continue the position in a more permanent role, and as I said, the funding would come out of a fund that is required to be used for recycling efforts.
Okay, thanks.
Counsel Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, you answered the question.
You're all set?
Yeah, thank you.
Counsel Nash?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I'm sorry, I probably should just read these minutes, but, you know, there is more to this story, the inspections director did draft a memo that we discussed during the proceedings of this meeting. We have to take into consideration that recycling is a big deal in this community, across America, and overseas, as we all know, and Andy can elaborate if it's necessary, but Anna's role in this recycling coordinator capacity would also be, not enforcement necessarily, but education. There is a new standard, I guess I'd call it, Andy, of 99.7% clean recycling product?
There is, Ron nailed it when he said 80%.
Okay.
Up until this past March, there has been, the market has generally accepted 80% contamination in the recycling, unprecedented in all the time I've been in public health, they just jacked it up to 99.7%, so a .3% contamination level is allowed, for the first time since I've been in the career. Quality outweighs quantity. So, we are going to be utilizing this person, Ms. Anna, to hopefully improve the quality and beyond that, beyond Ms. Anna, if it works, to keep going with improving our quality. As I said, we've got three to five years of financing available to do this. And in 2027, or whenever it happens, we've been talking a lot about the landfill and curbside waste. At some point, whether it be tomorrow, 10 years from now, or 20 years from now, we're going to take over curbside and we want a good quality recycling when that happens.
Thank you.
Counselor Anna?
Just a couple of things. I guess I would like, I'm going to support this. I would like to see some type of enforcement for recycling, if that's possible. But it's just a comment, on China as the primary in that paragraph, and as of March 1st, they raised their standards to 99.7%. Well, I'd like to see that with the toys that they paint and send over to the United States with all the lead that's in it. And, you know, so I just, I find that, I don't, I find it kind of amusing that China's expecting a 99.7% when they can't even keep the lead out of the toys that they sell, they ship over here for us to sell. So, that's just a little comment to mine. So, you don't have to comment on it, that's just my comment. And that's all. But I would like to see Anna or somebody enforce, you know, because I go, I see in those recycle bins, stuff that shouldn't be in those recycle bins. I mean, I know it's streamlined, but come on, you don't put tires and garbage and stuff in there. It's just like, just don't do it.
Mr. Felter?
The, China's a major cog to this, however, that's not the only thing. The biggest bottling recycling plant in Franklin, Mass., I believe, shut down. So, we've actually been accepting loads of pure glass at the landfill because there's no market for it. It's just, China's not the only impetus, it just was a major one.
I just, I just find it amusing in this, and maybe perhaps some research should be done on shipping some of our trash out, maybe overseas, that, like Germany and Switzerland and those other countries that are, they do all that recycling, they have no more garbage, and they're importing garbage into their countries so they can turn it into methane and sell it as a clean energy. So, maybe some research on that should be done. I believe I sent links to many people about this a couple of years ago. So, and I don't think it's ever been looked, but maybe that's something that can be looked into, who knows? But, because, you know, methane is a form of clean energy and we have the power up there to do that. So, that's all.
Thank you. Counselor Steves?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a quick thing, if we, can we have either Andy or Anna or some combination actually do a quick presentation at some point in the near future on what actually qualifies as contaminated recycling? I'm like, I'm thinking, for example, does it count to, would we have to be taking things like the labels off of our cans and stuff like that? I bet a lot of people don't know. So, if something, it would be nice to clarify exactly what is actually expected, since most people probably don't know, so.
I anticipate that part of her job will be to find a way to get that word out to the public, you know? No more hoses or sneakers in the recycling, please. No more plastic bags in the recycling, please. Part of her job, if approved at this level, will be to inform the public how to prepare recycling products, what recycling products are available. And we'll investigate several venues to get that word out.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Anna?
Sorry, just one more.
Just one more thing.
We've had education before on this, so many times, from other past employees. And it just seems like the more effective way is to enforce the laws that we have on the books right now. And that's all I'm going to say on that.
Thank you. Reeducation is not a bad thing at times.
Right, I agree, it's not a bad thing, but when it's repetitive and repetitive and nothing seems to be working.
Point taken, I agree.
And the fines were working at one time.
Will be a combination of items, I'm sure, in the future. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous, all present?
Thank you.
Item 10, vote to accept the fiscal year 19 Mass. Cultural Council funds to the Southbridge Local Cultural Council account in the amount of $13,000 for dates of service, July 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2019.
Second.
Motion is second. Discussion? Counselor Steves?
Just a quick question, do we already have a rough idea of what events are going to be funded by this?
I'm sorry, what?
Do we already, do we have a schedule?
No, the Cultural Council may have that information. They decide on all the events. So, I think it's an application process. So, they look through the application process and they decide what funds they can do with the 13 grand. I'm not exactly sure where they are in that process, this is new money. They tend to doubt they'd be ahead of it, but they could be. I mean, they know, frankly, there's some events I think they do every year. You know what I mean? So, it depends. I think really what happens is, what events didn't they do last year, they might want to consider this year. But that, you'd have to ask the Cultural Council where they are in that mix.
Anything further? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous, all present? Agenda IM-11, vote to recommend that council approve the rail trail engineering scope as outlined in the September 18th, 2018 letter from JCLA to the DPW Director.
Second.
Second. Discussion? Counsel DePietro?
Mr. Chair, where is this money coming from? Is this directly from the town or is this from the ground?
There, this is no additional money. This is just a re-proportioning of the existing scope. So, this is no money, the money is already approved in the existing budget. It was town money, there was $130,000 set aside in town money. The scope that they, original scope they have doesn't utilize all that money, it's just a changing of some of the scope items to more mimic what they are looking ahead to do for the next filing.
May I follow up on that, Mr. Chair?
Certainly, Counsel.
That being the case, and I was obviously a detractor at several meetings and I still certainly am, while the rail trail in theory is a nice idea, it's just something that we're going to keep pouring money into. Every obstacle we come to, bridges, walkways, added to the maintenance that Department of Public Works is going to have to continually do over the years, I think this is money not well-spout. And I would certainly recommend that council take into consideration.
Counselor Anna?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for you. I don't really like how this reads. I think that we should put, Ms. Blakely, did you say that we're re-appropriating the money?
It's not a re-appropriation of the money, the money is already there. It's just the change, the scope was revised to reflect the scope of work that is needed to address the comments.
So, vote to recommend that council approve the rail trail engineering scope as outlined in the September 18th, 2018 letter from JCL Director. There shouldn't be any money attached to this, just to like?
The money's already there. It's not, the money's not changing, it's the contract amount staying exactly the same.
Okay. I just, it just seems like there should be a little bit more meat to it because it's...
Actually...
It doesn't seem, it seems vague.
Well, to be honest with you, Counselor, we discussed this at the DPW, meaning that I did chair, we actually, I asked for the amendment to have it to what this amended dollar figure was. So, that's why everything that's being repurposed as through the scope of work was per this letter. So, that's how we did it as a detachment. So, the proposal was that the money was there as stated by the DPW Director, and it was the way that it was going to be allocated within that scope of work, which was the contract. So, we just looked at, because it was, the 25% of the design work was discussed, the engineering work, there was some additional work that needed to be done. We have an issue with erosion, so they had to do some additional engineering, I believe, on the erosion portion. So, because of the way that scope of work went, they were, within that scope, they were just reallocating the money within the contract.
Okay, so maybe we should put something in here that references the original vote date, as originally voted on, whenever it was voted on.
Yeah, I don't have that. I thought it was just very clear to say, hey, this was the scope of work, this is how we're reallocating the $90,000.
Right.
So, that $90,000 was, that's why I offered the amendment to have this attached. So, whatever the vote is, it's per this document.
Right, but the agenda item itself is vague. It just doesn't, like, I don't believe it has enough teeth. That's all, that's just me. I think it should be a little bit more detailed. That's me, so.
Counsel Claire?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for you. And I apologize for missing this Subcommittee meeting. Originally, the 25% appropriation was $130,000 to complete the 25% design submission, okay.
It was, the 25% was for the whole project. That, I mean, that amount was for the whole project. It's for the 25, the 75, and the 100%. This is still covering the same scope, but the needs of the projects have kind of moved around, so they've kind of moved the money around of what they need. That's all that's changed. Currently, we're still working with the DOT because there's some things that they're still asking for that weren't covered in the original scope of work. But we haven't nailed those down, so we can't even talk about a change order. But these are the things that they know and they can cover under the same amount of work, a same amount of money.
Okay, so with, what is the absolute bare minimum that we have to?
This.
So, this?
This is it.
So, if, so all of this needs to be done at the present time in order for the entire project to go forward?
The project needs to keep moving forward and we won't meet the deadlines if we don't keep moving it forward. If we get to a stopping point, then we get to a stopping point. But they have to work on these different tasks, pretty much, yeah, they're different tasks that all are working on this different track at the same time.
And so, what's our, so I know that we have a pretty tight deadline with this. We're not 100% sure if we're even going to get the funds. Can we get some kind of update as to that, if we're going to be, you know?
But you're not approving any additional funds. So, if we stop, if you, okay, I'll put it right out there, if we don't approve this, we're done.
I get, I understand that. When we originally appropriated the money, I...
Yeah, you were conscious, and we're moving along very, we're moving along well as far as engineering-wise. They've reviewed the 25% design supplemental, DOT is extremely happy with it. There are some issues they have brought up that we have, that we're kind of pushing back on because we're worried about the scope of the project getting too large. But if we don't continue with the engineering portion of our engineering portion of what we agree with, we will not be able to meet the deadlines and even get the simple erosion done. We're talking about re-scoping the project to at least cover the erosion portion, which is the most critical concern. If we don't cover that, we will not have a rail trail. And I get it, because I want to push this back to DOT as much as anybody else, because to my eyes, it's their problem, not ours. But we have to work in conjunction with them, and this is the mechanism for us both to get what we want, which is that erosion solved so that a rail trail can exist there.
So, that's, that's all well and good. So, now that the scope is changing, we've already put about $40,000 has been spent already.
Oh, yeah.
We're looking at this $90,000 for the next steps. What other, what other obligations financially is the town going to have before this actually gets completed?
I don't know that at this time yet. Until we nail down the rest of the scope with the DOT, with their comments, we still have to go through a public comment period, we still need to go with that. We have made it very clear to DOT that if we have to limit the scope of the project, meaning that we can't do as much as we originally proposed, we are not, we're not extending any additional money out there. So, they have already come back and said that they will have some of their engineers look at the, some of the issues going along. So, they are being a partner on this. But at this time, either we're at a tipping point in the project and we will continue to push back, that we will not have to put any additional funds back there. That's what our goal is, to not have to extend additional funds. I can't guarantee that we're not going to have to come back and say, look, it's, we got to do this part, it's $25,000, but we're still getting the $1 million.
My problem personally is that this $1 million is going to fix an erosion problem on state-owned land. So, if the worst were to happen and the erosion gets bad enough so that it starts creeping up on the commercial property, Southbridge has no obligation to fix that. It is great to have a rail trail that is completed and can go from that side all the way into Dudley, but at the end of the day, it's hard to sit here and justify putting $130,000 into a project that, when there is no guarantee that we're actually getting the money, and there also is no guarantee that we can't, that we're not going to have to expend additional monies from the town budget for additional scopes in this project. So, I mean, if nothing else, I need some kind of timeline to when we can get these answers.
We have the money. If we go out and meet our deadlines of bidding, we have the money. We're ahead, we're right on schedule. The money is guaranteed as long as we meet the timelines in that, in that grant award.
But we still might have to expend additional money beyond the $130,000 that's already been appropriated.
There is a clause in that grant award that says if the project scope goes over the 1.1 million, over 10%, over that award, that we're responsible for the additional fees. That is what we need to protect ourselves most from. If there's additional engineering that needs to be done, that can be negotiated with the state of who does it and with the consultant. I can't guarantee there's not because there's already something that says that we may have to do a bridge evaluation of the bridges that we have out there. I know that, I don't know, we're still pushing back. Alls I can tell you is that until we get to the point where we can have the conversation with them, that yes, we're moving forward with this and that we're good with the money here on the existing current scope, I can't have the conversation about what the next scope is going to be.
And I just want to say too, I understand that you're doing your absolute best on this and you are putting all of your heart into this to make sure that it goes forward. So, my comments are in no way...
No, I understand.
Yeah.
And I share your frustration of the fact that this is state land, big time. I share your frustration that this has taken a lot of effort of town time, my own time, Matt's time, other people's time to try to get this done, where I think this is a state But I know that a lot of people, besides myself, you know, the Rails Committee, the Trails Committee, they really have put in a lot of time into trying to get a trails system in. This money, if we don't use it, it's gone. This is federal money that got repurposed, that was a grant from a long time ago, that it's not coming back.
Well, the $1 million is gone. This $90,000 that, you know, we're adjusting the scope of is not...
Some of this work has already been done. So, we're going to talk about, you know, we would owe our consultants part of this no matter what, because a lot of this work has already been done so that we could keep the project moving. He came and said, look, this is what I need to do, this is how I need to build this, three tasks, so I can get this done. Some of it's still going on, the right-of-way work needs to be finalized, but it's all surveyed, it's all done.
And my absolute last question, I do apologize. Where does the title work stand right now?
My understanding with the title work, I just saw an email that they accepted the opinion from council, from our council, that the title was clean. So, the easement and the right-of-way work can proceed forward, which is good news. They were happy with the research that was done.
Thank you.
Mr. Town Manager, did you have anything additional?
I do. First, thank you, first Counsel Claire, I want to thank you, your questions were excellent and all of them have been discussed at great length. I had an opportunity, I just wanted to share with you, an opportunity to be at a meeting with about, must have been 20 state officials, me, Heather, Matt, and we talked a lot about the issues you discussed. You're quite right that the issue of the bank deterioration and what it could do across that trail to a private company is something we've had a lot of discussion about. In fact, I made your point very, very clear to state officials that this is their responsibility. The state understands that very clearly. And as Heather's saying, we're trying to control the scope. And I made it very clear to them that we have no additional money to put into this project. What we put in is 130, that's all our intention is. Matter of fact, the state recognized that, took some design work upon themselves to do because they recognize that. Also, I made it very clear to them that we have a $1 million, that's all we're putting in. And I think the state is going to be very responsive to it if it goes beyond the scope and gets larger in terms of the construction costs. I think they're going to end up adding more money in because they're quite understanding[1744.31] of the fact that this is their problem, not really ours. We want the trail, obviously, and the Trails Committee wants the trail portion of this. But the state understands that they have liability in this issue, and the trail currently belongs to them. So I'm pretty comfortable, one, because we're not going to give any more money, that, we've made that very clear, but two, I'm pretty comfortable they're going to come through because they understand the problem, and they kind of have no choice, to be, to be totally honest with you. The DPW Director is Clara Robb, did the title search on those properties had to be done. They sent to the state official who is requiring it, she's okay, it's approved, so the title search portion is done. The only real cost in the long term to this is going to be the maintenance of the trail once it's complete. We don't see that as big dollars, but like any other trail in town, we want to have, maintain it in some way to make it viable to cross. The next step, just to, to councilors understand, is the state wants us to lease the entire trail from the Dudley line all the way through to where it ends in Southbridge. So the lease will occur for that whole trail, so we'll have control of the whole trail, which is really nice, but the title search only has to be done from the Dudley line to the Greek Restaurant. So we don't have to do any more title search issue. The title search was only a requirement of the million dollars. So, you know, the nice thing about that is that if the town chooses to, has money, free cash, or other uses, we can get rid of some of those rail ties and clean up other portions of the trail, once we actually have control of it. And it'll be the insurance for that, obviously, it's our regular town insurance, so there's no additional insurance cost.
Councilman?
Um, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion to, to this, because I still don't like the wording in it, to vote, um, the town, uh, vote the town council, the town council vote to accept the amendment to, to the goods and services agreement for the rail trail engineering scope as outlined in the September eighteenth letter from JCLA to the DPW Director.
Do you have that, Madam Secretary? Could you repeat that?
Would you like me to read, okay. I'd like to make a motion, the town council vote to accept the amendment to goods and services agreement for the rail trail engineering scope as outlined in the September eighteenth letter from JCLA to the DPW Director. Did you get that? Okay.
Okay, so that's an amendment, motion to amend this agenda item. Is there a second on that? Is there a second?
Second for sync of discussion.
Okay, discussion?
I, I guess I, if I would, Chairman?
Yep.
I guess I'm trying to understand what that motion would do, to vote to accept the goods and service agreement.
Goods and services.
Um, I'm not sure that says any change. Is it Heather? I mean, I'm not sure what that-
It's given the agenda item more meat, and that's what this letter states right in here.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Amendment to goods and service-
It's amendment to goods and service agreement. So it's just, all it's doing is giving that agenda item some more meat. I'm, I'm like worried that it's vague, so.
Okay, so you're just adding the goods and services.
That's all, that's all I'm doing.
All right. Any further discussion on that? Okay. All those in favor of the motion as amended?
Wait, wait, no.
Discussion.
Of, of the amendment? Sorry.
Yeah, the amendment.
That's an amendment. All those in favor of the amendment?
Yeah.
Is everybody clear on the amendment?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor? I'm sorry, go ahead, again?
Yeah. Of the amendment, that's it.
Opposed? Staying? So what do we have? We have five?
Yeah, the amendment passed.
Yeah, yeah.
It's just adding something to it. It's just giving it a little bit more meat.
Okay, so the amendment is, the amendment passes, so could you just read the agenda item, Madam Secretary?
Yep. Vote to recommend that the council, vote to accept the amendment, I probably, probably don't need the vote to recommend.
Yeah.
Hold on.
Right.
Okay.
Motion should be the-
The town council vote, well, she started with the town council, is that how you want it?
Yep.
The town council vote to accept the amendment to goods and services agreement for the rail trail scope, for the-
Rail trail engineering scope as outlined in the September eighteenth, two thousand and eighteen letter from JCL to the DPW Director. Correct?
Yes.
You got that?
I do, yeah, I just copied and pasted.
Any further discussion on that as amended? Council DePietro?
On the amendment, Mr. Chair, or on the item itself?
On the item as amended.
Yes, please, if I may.
What, what's your, you have a question?
No, I'm good, never mind.
The motion was amended, now we're voting on, so I'm asking, is there any further discussion on the motion as amended?
Please, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Uh, the, the town manager actually made my argument for me. All this money, heartache, and maintenance is for a dirt road from the Golden Greek Restaurant to Dudley. Let's all keep that in mind on this vote, please.
Okay. Thank you. Councilor Claire?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you, to the town manager. Um, so, has the lease on the whole trail become before council at all? Okay. So, we're talking about a lease from the Dudley line to-
We're not talking about a lease tonight, we're talking about-
I get that, but we're talking about, we're talking about approving ninety thousand dollars, and we were just told that there is a lease now attached to this entire project that has not been brought before us or made known to us, so I think that it's relevant.
So the town manager alluded to the fact that they want us to lease it, they're just doing the engineering part of this. I'm not familiar with this rail trail, because I was not on council for the, the inception of all this.
The, the rail trail goes, from my knowledge-
So what is your point, what is your point about the lease?
Uh, my, my point about the lease is that, I mean, we're, we're still talking, if, is the lease contingent on this project? If, is the project contingent on the lease? So we can fix, we can utilize their money without leasing the whole trail.
That, that is true. They have not put that as a requirement, that I'm aware of. Heather, have you made a requirement of that lease? I don't think it's a requirement. They haven't said so.
Not the whole, not the whole trail, we have to be-
Lease from the portion in Dudley to the Greek Restaurant.
Golden Greek.
Okay.
Just to the Golden Greek. Okay.
If I could, yes, okay.
The, the state has expressed that they would like us to take over the whole thing. We have not made any agreement. They have expressed that we have to have the portion that the construction is going to be done on, because the money was awarded to the town, that we have to be in control of the property. Okay.
Councilor Claire? I'm going to entertain a motion to table this to Thursday night's DPW meeting for further discussion, because there's too many questions here that-
I'm sorry.
No, it's not your fault, I, I just, I'm, I think it's all getting convoluted into a lease plus further, uh-
We're not ready to discuss the lease yet, we don't have a lease in place.
If there's no lease in place, and that's, the way that you said that, it sounded like it was contingent on a lease beyond this property that we're discussing. If it's not, and you're aware that you have to come back before council to make any kind of decision on that, then I'm, then I'm fine with that as part of the question.
Fine, we understand that, great.
Thank you, and I apologize for all the questions, I should have, I, I couldn't make it to the subcommittee meeting.
No, that's all, that's all right, I'm just, if there's too many questions about a lease and its contingent, it needs further discussion. I mean, I thought we were very clear at the meeting that this was just items that were already engineered, the fact that the engineering group has already done the engineering to this, but in order for us to pay them, we have to change the scope of their, um, services agreement. So they've already engineered parts of this. Um, that's why it was outlined in this as to the change in the task, because they've already done the work in order for us to pay them appropriately. So it had nothing to do with any further work on accepting the trail, am I correct on that?
That's correct.
Right. Right. Any further discussion? Council Adams?
I will say thanks, Mr. Chair. That is in the draft minutes, which is in the subcommittee, uh, DPW Subcommittee Agenda Item for this week. So the lease is brought up in there, that I put in there itself, and that's all I have, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Unfortunately, I'm not going to be here Thursday, I'm out of town. I supported the rail trail, but I didn't know anything about a lease, so that's all new to me, too. So I will be quite interested to hear about this, and I don't understand why would we, we would take over property that we have to lease out. I, I'm just like, but I know that's going to be discussed at another meeting.
No, we'll, we'll discuss that for future, not this Thursday, but we'll, we'll post it for another meeting.
Okay, okay, yeah, but had I known that in the beginning, this would probably be a different story, and I think with other counselors, too, up here, so.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion as amended? Opposed? Council DePietro opposed, others approved. Item twelve, vote to approve the snow plow and snow removal contractors for the FY two thousand and nineteen winter season. Is there a motion?
Second.
Okay, this was brought up at the DPW meeting. This is a list of contractors as DPW has brought forward in the past. This is the initial list, I believe, Heather, and-
Correct.
-she noted that she would be bringing forward the additional, um, contractors as they've been brought forward, so this is the first initial list.
Correct.
Any further discussion? Any questions? All those in favor?
Oh, I just had one.
Oh, Councilman?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I just want, um, because I, again, um, they all have insurance, and those we hire part-time are just, that's it, part-time, they're not, they know it's just seasonal and that we're not, we don't have paid employment.
Absolutely.
Okay, just want to make that clear.
Yep.
Thanks.
All those in favor? Opposed? The unanimous those present. Item thirteen, vote to allow the town of Southbridge to plow the roads at Hunter's Ridge, Red Fox Boulevard, Whitetail Circle, Quail Run, and the roads at Tall Pine subdivision, Westburn Lane, and Hilltop Drive extension for, for the winter of two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen, while the town works towards making these public ways.
Second.
Discussion? Councilman?
I'm just very thankful that we are able to do this. Seems like Hunter's Ridge, they got the worst end of this whole deal, and it's a shame. And I hope the next time subdivisions are put in Southbridge that more research is, is done on things, and especially the laws as they change every five to ten years. And I'm just very thankful that we're able to do this for the people at Hunter's Ridge, that's all.
Council Steve?
Um, I just want to say, first of all, I am totally in favor of doing this, just like that was last year, but I do have a quick question for Heather. When you were plowing it last year, did you see any, any significant issues?
Yeah, the road is horrible.
Well, I knew that.
Well, I don't know what you mean by significant issues, yes. It's in very bad shape, yes, it has water problems that come out from different locations in the road there. It's going to need some regrading and potentially some subdrains when we fix the road if we do eventually take it over. But that will be addressed in a different term.
No, but I was concerned more as far as like any issues with plows or damage to plows or things like that.
We had an accident up there because of it being too icy, but we are extremely careful and make sure the drivers that do go in that area know where the raised manholes are and know where the obstacles are as much as possible as we can, but I can't say that some of the dings and bangs and issues that we had, nothing broke right there, other than the truck that we had the accident with.
Okay, okay.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous all present. Item fourteen, vote to approve repairs to Old Saw Mill Road, a private way in accordance with the town bylaw, Chapter Eight, Section Eight dash one oh two, in the amount not to exceed five hundred dollars.
Second.
Any discussion? That was brought forward at DPW with an unanimous three zero vote to approve. Any discussion? No? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous all present. Item fifteen, vote to approve repairs to a catch basin on Crescent Street, a private way, and authorize a repair without the private way petition due to concerns with winter snow plow operations. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. A motion and second, discussion? Councilman?
There's no dollar amount attached to the repairs.
Um, this would still be do, this would be done under the private ways, five hundred dollars.
So can we add that? I mean, I think it should be added.
Okay, so-
If, if I may interject, is this a tricky situation, because this is actually on our drainage system? So I am, so I would do it under the private ways, because it is in a private way section. However, if it means that I need something because it's our drainage, and it's got to be, I need a new rim, which I don't believe I do, or anything, I just think it's going to be some concrete patchwork and backfill, should be way under five hundred, but it's, it's our drainage on a private way. It's a tricky, one of those tricky issues that we have a responsibility to do, which is one of the reasons why we've brought it forth without the signatures. It's a danger, it will be a danger when we have to plow down there. So it's an area that we need to get some clarification on, but at this time, we need to fix the problem.
I, I agree, you need to fix the problem, but there should be, it shouldn't be a blank check. I mean, we should have some money attached to this.
It's, we have money in a, in a stormwater and COVID budget anyways. I can't tell you how much it's going to be until we get there and fix it, honestly. It's a collapsed drainage catch basin, they don't usually cost more than five hundred dollars to fix, because it's concrete block and concrete, it's a, you know, it's bricks.
So if we put in a thousand dollars and it only costs five hundred, then we get the five hundred.
You're not, you're not getting money back anyways, it's all money in my budget. It's already covered in my budget.
It's, yeah, I believe, when we discussed this, Councilman, was the fact that, the reason it was worded this way was the fact that we are responsible for that drainage system, so it's not the typical private way item, so that, it goes into our system.
Okay, so I understand, I understand that, what Ms. Blakely just said, too, but I just, you know, just approving things without money being attached, without a bill or anything.
We're not, but you approved my budget for stormwater, what I'm asking you to do is allow me to do the work on the private way.
Okay.
The money is already in my budget between the private way money wouldn't exceed five hundred, that's all I have left in that budget, unless we put more money in there, because we've already done three private ways, one tonight and two previously, so there's five hundred dollars left in there, and if there's any additional money, it would come out of stormwater sewers and-
So if there's any additional money that you need to take, will we see that, or no?
You would come out of my stormwater sewer and cover it, but line item.
But we won't know how much, okay.
You don't, I fix-
Okay, that's fine.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't know, because we're going to go to the pallet of bricks that we bought for a thousand dollars and take the ones that we need, so I won't really be, I can't say, okay, that's twenty dollars for that brick, that's twenty dollars for-
No, and I, I get what you're saying, but we had a budget, we had an agenda item up here one time, and the school wanted just to spend, you know, I mean, and it's just like, even though they had the money.
It's going to be, my prediction, it's less than five hundred dollars.
Thank you, that's all.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous all present. Item sixteen, vote to ratify the amendment to the contract with tie and bond for engineering services on the Moon and Laurel Street Drainage Relocation Project under the Mass Works Grant to cover design review and oversight related to blasting for rock removal, which was not previously anticipated for the amount of five thousand dollars.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Okay. I believe this came through your, Council Adams, was this through yours?
DPW.
Plan and development?
No, this is DPW.
This came through DPW? Okay. All right, any further question?
I was just the note taker.
You're the note taker, yes.
It was all blur.
It was all blur.
So that was due to the fact that we had conversation about it, and it was work that wasn't anticipated, but the blasting is an unknown. So it was unanimous by those present.
No.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. Second. Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
From the meeting minutes of that DPW subcommittee meeting, Counselor Nash questions last minute adding of this agenda item that was not within the 48-hour OML requirements, blah, blah, blah. I actually voted in opposition. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, I apologize. Any further discussion? Counselor Steves?
Just to clarify, as I recall from that discussion, the issue isn't, is that, that you originally had thought that it would just simply be able to, you'd be able to hammer it out, and it's much, much more of an issue than hammering can do, so.
This is, that is correct. I'm sorry, shaking my head. It is correct. When they, they've attempted for over a week to hammer it. They tried to get a larger hammer, and it's still, they're just in a nub of granite, and they have to go pretty deep in this location. They're hoping that they can actually get out of it, but until they get to this nub with drainage, you kind of have to work up to their high point, so. The money is covered under the MassWorks grant. There's enough money in the existing engineering budget for the grant app that was approved. So it's not additional money for the town. It's coming out of the grant funds.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous, all present. Excuse me. Item 17, vote, the motion to adopt an order of taking of interest in real property located in the town of Southbridge for municipal purposes pursuant to the general law, Chapter 79, as authorized by the April 23, 2018 vote of this council, namely Red Fox Boulevard, Quail Run, and a portion of Whitetail Circle and Rabbit Run, as those waves are shown on a plan entitled, definitive plan of Hunters Ridge in Southbridge, Massachusetts, owned by Mutual Builders Incorporated, dated April 30, 2001, revised December 5, 2001, Paralean Survey Incorporated. Said plan being recorded with the Worcester Registry of Deeds in Plan Book 776, Plan 40, parentheses, the plan, close parentheses, and being more particularly bound, bounded, and described as follows, as identified on the order of taking to be recorded in the Worcester County Registry of Deeds.
So moved.
Second. Discussion? Counselor Manor?
I just want to again say, we need to, or somebody really needs to do their homework before we do the subdivisions, do the research, make sure that everything, all, because laws change, and so we don't run into this problem again. And this was a very sad situation for those people at Hunters Ridge, and I felt very bad for them. And I am so glad we are finally coming to some type of resolution to help these people out. That's all.
Thank you. Counselor Steves?
I just want to quick summarize that we did discuss this at GenGov just before this meeting. We unanimously approved recommending it. At this point, the situation is that these are the documents, this list of meets and bounds and stuff that we're approving tonight, was approved by the lawyer, and it will go through the process of going through the, going through the, approaching the bank, giving them their timeline, that they have a timeline to either pay it off or do whatever they're going to do to it. And Ron said that he didn't expect them to do anything, really do anything with it, with the betterment process for the people who live on the street coming up eventually, once this is finalized. We already have about 180 grand that we got from the planning board, taking the money that was already in the tripartite agreement, which means that the road cost has been estimated at around 420,000 total. So whatever the betterment will be, which will be a 30-year betterment, will be the difference between the two. And let's see here, the owner's working with us, but the bank is not. So that we, they asked us to just give it, we asked them to just give it to us for taxes. They're not willing to do that. So this is still, still kind of in limbo, but taking it here just allows us to get the process going so that we can actually get the road work done that we need to get done, and.
Any further discussion? Just make sure before we leave tonight that we do sign the order of taking. I don't have a copy here. Take a roll call, Madam Secretary.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor O'Clair?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor DePietro?
Yes.
Counselor Jovan?
Yes.
Counselor Morales?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Unanimous, all present. Item 18, vote to approve the tax increment finance agreement between the town of Southbridge and United Lens Company Incorporated. The town requests that the project be designated as a certified project for a term of 15 years. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I want to start with this one a little bit. This is an issue of, I think, great importance in a partnership that has been long outstanding. As you know, the town of Southbridge, United Lens have had a long-term relationship, and they are a company that originated here in town and have really done a great job in supporting the town in a whole host of ways, including charity agreements and stuff. The building is an old facility. I think we all recognize it was built many, many years ago and doesn't really meet the needs, the current needs of the company. And they've been working with the town to look at grants, as you may recall, we did a MassWorks grant to get a storm sewer that, it was a town storm sewer that went right underneath their building. But the building needs a lot of upgrades in order to meet the energy needs of the company long into the future. And the company came to us not too long ago, actually, just within the last couple of weeks, to talk about the issue of a TIF. Myself and Rosemary Scrivens, our Economic Development Director, met with Bill and his staff over United Lens and came up with this agreement. I just want people to clearly understand that the TIF agreement is future taxes based upon an increased assessment on the building as it relate to money that the company would put into this building. So in this case, the company is talking about investing $15 million in the company, in the building and other assets. But the, what we're basically talking about is just the incremental increase in value of the building as a result of that new investment. So the town will retain all current taxes from United Lens. That wouldn't change in any way. It would be just, we're talking about just future taxes. Now, Rosemary Scrivens is here, our Economic Development Commission Chair is here to discuss about this issue, as well as Bill from United Lens. So, Mr. Chairman, is it okay? I think our economic development has a basic opening statement. If it's okay to have her start with that?
Yes, absolutely.
With that, if the Economic Development Director would come forward?
Thank you. So I'm gonna, I tried to sum up kind of what this is about and, you know, where the company is at with their request. The United Lens Company management team has asked the town to provide a TIF based on a proposed investment to expand and approve its facility and headquarters at 259 Worcester Street in town. Over the last 100 years, the facility has been expanded through several rounds of building additions and renovations. The current three-story, 100,000-square-foot manufacturing and office facility houses equipment inventory, vertically-integrated operations, including a molding division, optical shop, coating division, service center, and maintenance shop. United Lens Company is proposing to construct a new 3,780-square-foot central utility building to house new centralized electrical service, compressed air systems, high-efficiency heating boilers, chillers, nitrogen generation, and processed water to be distributed throughout the facility. A multitude of additional improvements are also proposed to the large 100 square foot, 100,000-square-foot building, or of existing buildings on the United Lens campus, including new compressed air distribution systems, processed water distribution systems, nitrogen distribution systems, electrical distribution systems, high-efficiency HVAC systems, fire alarm systems, life safety improvements, and a complete facility roof replacement. A breakdown of the costs associated with this project was included in your packet. There, you're going to see a few different figures, but after allowing for valued engineering reductions, basically what that means is, you know, you have an engineer look at a proposed project and all the line items, and they look for ways to reduce the cost. So after that was done, the figure amounts to $14,119,438. The company currently has 126 full-time jobs. The management team states that there are no new jobs being projected, but that the company will retain its existing headcount. The company is requesting a 15-year TIF with the following exemption schedule for new property taxes and personal property taxes generated by the investment described above. So the first five years would be 100% exemption on those new taxes. The second five years would be a 75% exemption, and the final five years would be a 50% exemption. And the Economic Development Commission met earlier tonight, so, and voted on this. And I'd like to have the Chair of that commission, David Livinggood, speak briefly about their discussion and their vote.
Okay, thank you. Former Counselor Livinggood, it's a pleasure to see you here tonight.
Thank you. Things haven't much changed, except for the fire trucks gone. As Chairman and the Commission, we're duly pointed by the town. We take that responsibility very seriously. The only thing we really didn't care for this time was we had very short time to make a decision, but we think we've made the best decision for the town. When we look at this thing and decide, we have to weigh the benefit to the town, the cost to the town. We've talking about part of Southbridge's history. A company that's been here 102 years. The cost to the town, when you break it down, is almost negligible when you actually look at the number figures. I mean, it's money, but it's not big money. The advantage to the town with an upgraded company, a chance of growth. Right now, we're not looking at a growing company, I don't think, but I think once they make their changes, they'll start seeing growth. They've already talked possibly in the future or expanding their manufacturing size. So we were unanimous in the support, and I would urge the council to be unanimous for it also. We are now in the big leagues. These are companies that are being addressed from other states, wanting them to come to their state. We have to try to be competitive. We have a little bit of disadvantage. We have higher labor costs, we have higher energy costs, and we have a state that doesn't allow us to do what we would like to do because everything's done through the state. I came from a state where towns competed against the town next to them for businesses, and they won because they would make offers. Town, states now are saying, come to us. We can get you cheaper labor, we can get you cheaper energy. We have to try to do what we can to keep our heritage tight. And as far as I'm concerned, when it comes to economic development, if we can't retain the companies that are here, how are we going to land new ones? And so this is very much, to me, the future of Southbridge. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe, CEO of United Lens, you're here tonight. Would you like to address this topic and educate us a little bit more on what your thoughts are? Just so we know, I mean, I know we haven't had an opportunity to hear from the company itself, and this is a big decision for us, so.
Big decision for me. Hi, I'm Bill Lannan, the CEO of United Lens. So our problem is, we have to spend perhaps as much as $15 million to upgrade our facility if we are to grow in the future. So when we were looking at that kind of money, naturally, we decided to look into it very thoroughly and decided we would employ tie and bond to analyze the plant and what needed to be done, the timeline that it needed to be done in. So the conclusion was, it's probably going to cost $14, $15 million. So if I'm going to spend that kind of money, I got to decide, am I going to spend it here? Or do I leave? It's pretty much that simple. We are being romanced, for lack of a better term, by other states. And that, it's probably the same money to pick it up and move it. But at the end of the day, I'd rather not move it. It's risky. So that's really where we're at. It's one way or the other.
No, I certainly appreciate that. You know, and United Lens has always been a good partner with the town of Southbridge for a long, long story to history. Our goal is to retain good employers and good partnerships. So we just wanted to understand how this came about and the timeline it did, because it really was thrown on our side on a very tight timeline. So if you can help us understand that.
We didn't, we didn't know that either. We found out when we sat with the state a week or so ago, that if the decision isn't made soon, there's not another opportunity until, I think, spring. Just the way that the state works.
The state as to Commonwealth of Massachusetts?
The, right.
Okay.
Yes, the economic development piece.
All right.
Thank you. I think what happened was a state thought we had town meeting form of government. Is that what you're referring to? And so they thought that this was going to be a town meeting and that the next possible opportunity was going to be in the spring? Is that what you're referring to?
You were there.
Yeah, I didn't hear that, but, yeah. So I just wanted to kind of clarify what I think he's saying.
I do understand we're on a tight timeline, so we appreciate it. And that's why this council is working very hard to be a good partner with you to get this accomplished.
We appreciate it.
Thank you. Counselor Manor?
So I'm in full support of this, the TIF to. We can't, our town cannot afford to lose businesses to other states or even other towns. So United Lens has been, you know, in the community for well over a century, and they're good business partners. So I will fully support what's brought in front of us tonight for the good of our community and for the good of the United Lens.
Thank you. Any further, Counselor Steves?
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions. First off, there's a timeline here in front of us, and I'm just curious, because it starts here on May 1. And I was just curious to have some idea of, when did you come to the conclusion that you were interested in seeking a TIF? And you mentioned the state, and you mentioned the talking to the state last week. Could you clarify a little more? Because I was a little confused about what you were actually referring to.
Let me introduce you to Joe Stolberg. So my name is Joe Stolberg. I serve as a director for United Lens and intricately involved in planning and have been involved with this project. And so this has all been going on simultaneously with respect to tie and bonds work started first, which was about two years ago, with a comprehensive, and the company spent several hundred thousand dollars through this study. Simultaneously, once we identified the scope of the project, it really moved towards, okay, to Bill's, what Bill's point was, to do some really good due diligence to see, okay, let's make sure we can support a $15 million investment here at home, not knowing what's going on over the rest of the country, et cetera. So we then contracted with the Hammond Group out of Ohio, and Jason needed some time to do that. And then, at the same time, we were going through our financing process, and so we've been provided a secure financing commitment for this project. So it's all squared away with a commitment letter, so that's squared away. So with respect to the TIF, it was really a collaboration of all of these things coming together. We had the tie and bond, we ended up with the finance committee. Jason's group came back with several attractive opportunities. And so for us to try and right-size and make sure that we were making the right decision, it did come fairly quickly. Jason's report came through, geez, within the last couple of months. We've been working diligently, and Bill has been on some calls with those folks in different areas. At that point, we scheduled a meeting with the state, Peter Milano, who is a Mass Business Director. So we basically spent some time with him, and that's what led us to say, okay.[1551.28] So, we basically spent some time with him, and that's what led us to say, okay. We went through some of the state opportunities. It really came down to a TIF, which was really going to make or break the, the situation from a competitive perspective. And so, that's the, the real flow of process that we've been through, which started a couple of years ago, but really culminated in the last month or so, to be perfectly honest. Now, we're shovel-ready, so we're looking to move forward quickly. Before the winter, we want to get some stuff done. It's been alluded to already. So, we're at a point now, and the reason we're looking to move fairly quickly is, if you saw the timeline, we're about six months behind from where ironclad our G C had, really would have liked to have been. And so, we're trying to move really quickly to expedite that process, pull the permits, and start, make a decision and go. And that's really what brings us on the fast track. And again, we do appreciate the, the efforts that the council has made in short notice, and Ron especially, so.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Councilor Steves, do you want to follow up?
Sort of.
Okay.
But I was also, also noticed that in the paperwork here, we don't have an actual breakdown of the, the actual amount that we would be tax incrementing. You know, in pre, in previous, for example, a couple, a couple of months, like a month and a half ago, we did the TIF for the, for the heat treating company. And we actually had a breakdown of how much, of how much the actual amounts that were going to be reduced were. We, we don't have that in our packet, so...
Can I ask Mr. Canoyer to step forward to handle that? Okay. Thank you.
Doesn't Will's wife work for the company? No? Will's wife works for the company?
So, good evening, everybody. I'm Will Canoyer. Before I speak, I just want to let you know that I have filed a disclosure with the town clerk. My family has a connection with the United Lens Company. So, with the one you're referring to, Hardline, they actually had a pro, similar to United Lens, we have the baseline value that's there. But Hardline had the final plans in place of what they were going to tear down, what they were going to build, exactly, exactly what the final building would look like. In this case, I don't have that, so I can't appraise the future value based on, I know that they plan on spending up to fifteen million dollars on the project. However, that doesn't all necessarily translate into value of a property. You know, the, the work is, has to be done to make the building useful to them in their needs, but it's not going to translate out to the value, so I can't project a value out like that. Couple of things I would like to note, though, a little baseline stuff, because you said, you know, you're looking for information, and there's some things I think are relevant. So, the property in question is, is one parcel which is located on the corner of Worcester Street, Laurel Street, and Moon Street behind it. So, it's surrounded by three sides. It's about a 2.9 acre parcel of land. And the current assessed value of that property is three million, one hundred, I don't remember the exact amount, three million, one hundred and forty-three thousand, three hundred dollars. So, that's the baseline you're going to have on the TIF. So, that value will always be taxable, no matter what happens. The TIF percentages will apply to incremental value above that, on that property only. And a couple of other really important things to note. So, United Lens owns a lot of property in Southbridge. That's one parcel we're discussing right there, that the TIF is going to apply to. And as I mentioned, the value of that property is three million, one hundred and forty-three thousand. In total, United Lens owns eighty-six, eighty-six properties, which have a total value of eight million, one hundred and forty-six thousand, plus or minus. They, you know, some of those properties are very small, and they dispose of them, but... So, that, the property where the TIF is going to apply is, you know, probably, I don't know what that percentage is, but three million, one forty-three of the total, eight million, one hundred and forty-six thousand dollars in property that they own. Further, I think it's important to note, every year, we have to do a tax, a top-ten taxpayer list for the bondholders and the bond rating agencies. So, United Lens in 2018, that value, that aggregate value I mentioned, eight million, one hundred and forty-six thousand, that put them at the, one, two, three, four, the fifth highest taxpayer in Southbridge. And last year, I believe, they paid approximately one hundred and sixty-nine thousand in property tax, or point eight-four of one percent of the total tax burden for the town. So, I, I know, I, I answered your question in a little bit extra, but I thought it was important for, to put it in your base of knowledge.
Okay. Councilor Daniel?
Yes, I believe that this is a worthwhile project, and I'm going to support it. United Lens has been a good partner to us for a long time, one hundred and two years. And to be frank and honest, I'm not thrilled with the timeline. It does seem kind of fast. I would have liked a little more time to look at it, but I'm willing to accept your explanation. And I think this is a worthwhile endeavor for you, and I wish you much success for another one hundred and two years.
Any further discussion? Anything further? Councilor Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I appreciate the brief. I don't appreciate the last-minute, we got to approve fifteen years in TIF. I, I would have done a deal to keep United Lens, because I know what you've done for this community all these years. I, I know what you've done, donation-wide, to, to help out the community, and also the families of Southbridge. So, I do appreciate that. When it first came to my attention, though, I was kind of surprised that if we had that longstanding trust, and that one hundred and two years' worth of Southbridge tradition, why it didn't come to us first, through the economic developer, or, or the director, or the town manager, to say, hey, this is what we're looking at, down the road. That's all I'm asking for that. I, I am going to support this, because I understand what it can do to families around here. I also understand what it could do to the base. I can also understand the economic development within it, too. But I'm just surprised that we found out about it, the Economic Commission, Development Commission, had forty-five minutes to decide, and we have about five, ten minutes. So, that, that's really my own concern. I guess if we could answer that question of why, I understand the, the earlier brief, but if we had that, maybe make me feel a little bit better on this one.
Dave, to answer your question, we've been researching this for two years, and we've researched it very, very thoroughly, extremely thoroughly. Because we don't necessarily want to leave Southbridge, but if you're going to spend fifteen million dollars in Southbridge, you better know what your options are, clearly. Spend fifteen million dollars anywhere, right? So, although it may be a surprise to you, it was a surprise to us, too, when we got all the information, which we've been working on for two years, and the state says, well, the book closes November 7th, so we need to make a decision now. So, the other people that we're speaking to, they, they deserve an answer as well. So, you know, here we are. It wasn't done intentionally. It wasn't done to upset anyone. We just, we had no idea that there was a cutoff on November 7th. It's just when we got all our facts, we got everybody together in our conference room, and we discussed it.
Thank you.
Yeah. And I certainly appreciate that, sir. It just, from our perspective, we appreciate the fact that you've researched this two years...
I understand. Fair is fair, but we had no clue.
Okay. And that's why we're trying to be good, and as a council, to really, and I really like to thank the Economic Development Commission for actually voting, uh, meeting tonight on short notice, so that we could get it here. And that's, we fast-tracked it. We certainly appreciate it. There is no doubt that, there is no desire to see United Lens leave the town of Southbridge. It'd be a tremendous blow on a town that's socially, economically, you know, as it is now. So, we appreciate the fact that you want to stay in Southbridge. So, Councilor Manna?
Thank you. I just want to make a comment that nothing the state does surprises me anymore, so I, I, I feel bad for you having that, that crunch, too, from the state not knowing in advance, because it doesn't surprise me the state would do something like that. That's all. Thank you.
So, I just, a final comment. I, I thank you for your commitment to want to stay in Southbridge, and, and work with us, and, and develop the site. So, I appreciate that. On behalf of the town of Southbridge, I'd like to thank you for making the investment in us, as we invest in you. So, anything further? Roll call, Madam Secretary?
Councilor O'Clare?
Yes.
Councilor Daniel?
Yes.
Councilor DePietro?
Yes.
Councilor Jovan?
Yes.
Councilor Manna?
Yes.
Councilor Morales?
Yes.
Councilor Nash?
Yes.
Councilor Steves?
Yes.
Councilor Adams?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. We look forward to you joining our tour when you will open the facility.
Anytime.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Okay. Agenda IM-19. Reading of the amendments to the Southbridge Zone and Bylaw Map is filed with the Town Clerk's Office entitled "Southbridge Zone and Bylaw," dated September 14, 2018; first reading of October 15, 2018; tonight's second reading, October 29, 2018.
Mr. Chair?
Councilor Manna?
Thank you, through you. At our last meeting, I did have someone come up to me and question me as to why we allowed questions on the reading, when...
I'm, what was, I couldn't hear you.
I had someone ask me why we allowed questions on the reading when it was just a reading, because he, he stated, he pointed out to me Robert's Rules, which I'm not familiar with the readings, on that, allowed discussion at the, at the final reading, from commenters and citizen input and whatnot.
I believe a reading is the fact that you're reading it so that you can solicit comments...
I'm just bringing it up. I was asked a question, so, I mean, I, I thought it deserved an answer. I mean, in past, we have done that. If I look back...
In past, you have done what?
Just read it. No one's discussed, no one's commented on it, until the final reading. So, that's all.
Okay. Councilor Steves?
I'd also like to point out that during, when we were talking about the, the medical marijuana bylaw, we also did have comments and some, make some changes to it going, during the process as well. So, we kind, we've kind of done it both ways.
I just wanted to bring it up. That's all.
Yeah. I certainly appreciate that. I take it a reading is, is just that, a reading to solicit, to make sure that whatever input you're getting in, that's, that's a public opportunity to get our information. Councilor Adams?
Mr. Chair, make a motion to waive the reading.
Is there a second?
A second.
Roll call, Madam Secretary, to waive the reading of the amendments.
Councilor Daniel?
Yes.
Councilor DePietro?
Yes.
Councilor Jovan?
Yes.
Councilor Manna?
Yes.
Councilor Morales?
Yes.
Councilor Nash?
Yes.
Councilor Steves?
Yes.
Councilor Adams?
Yes.
Councilor O'Clare?
Yes.
All right, as I did in the last one, we'll read the update of the project, so that, in full disclosure of transparency. "Southbridge Zone and Bylaw Update Project, October 2017 till October 2018. In October 2017, the town of Southbridge hired a team of top-notch consultants led by Barrett Plan Group to provide planning services to review the town's zone and bylaw map, update it and revise it so that it would align with the town's master plan, economic development plan, urban renewal plan, and other relevant documents. The project began with the formulation of a twelve-member town council-approved working group that was invaluable in its role of steering the consultants and staff over the course of ten intense working sessions. Those dated October 25, December 20, 2017, January 29, February 26, March 29, April 12, May 8, May 31, June 19, June 26, 2018. These sessions, in its role of steering the consultants and staff of the, oh, I'm sorry, strike that. These sessions, together with an extensive public participation process, resulted in a finished product that reflects a coordinated collaborative effort reflecting best practices, analysis of town's policies, and consistency with the State Zone and Act. Public participation processes include the following: interviews of twenty-seven community stakeholders, including commissioners, realtors, attorneys, developers, and town board members, conducted in early December 2017; presentation of overview of the planned project to the full town council on December 18, 2017; presentation of a zoning diagnostic report to the full town council on January 29, 2018; presentation and interactive workshops at an all-boards meeting on February 8, 2018; presentation to both the Southbridge Town Council and Planning Board at a joint meeting on June 20, 2018; posting of the first, second, and hearing drafts of the updated zone and bylaw and map on the town's website, as available throughout the project period. The hot copy of the proposed updated zone and map has been displayed in the Economic Development and Planning Department as well. Planning Board meeting and public hearing with a presentation by the town planner on October 3, 2018; presentation of the hearing draft at a joint meeting of the town council and Planning Development Subcommittee on October 9, 2018. At this meeting on October 3, 2018, the Planning Board voted unanimously seven-zero to recommend that the town council approve of the amendments to the Southbridge Zone and Bylaw and related map as proposed in the hearing draft. At the meeting of the Planning and Development Subcommittee on October 9, 2018, the members voted unanimously five-zero to recommend that the town council approve of the amendments to the Southbridge Zone and Bylaw and related map as proposed in the hearing draft." Councilor Adams? Oh, yeah, Councilor Nash, I'm sorry.
Project background, purpose. The town first established a zoning bylaw in the 1940s, and has updated and modified it over time. The last time it was substantially updated was in 1985, though there have been a number of amendments to it since. Through 2018, with the recent adoption of Medical Marijuana and Registered Marijuana Dispensary Zoning Bylaw. The purpose of this substantial general update was to encourage the types of development that Southbridge desires, and also promote high-quality architectural and site design, streamline permitting approval processes, address non-conformities, promote high-quality development and redevelopment, and help to improve property values, help to protect natural areas, maintain historic and neighborhood character, parentheses, especially in the central core slash downtown, end parentheses, while still allowing for new development where appropriate. Proposed updates and amendments. The town council will be considering major amendments as follows. One, all sections. Reorganize and update, I'm sorry, start over, paragraph A. Reorganize and update to make the bylaw easier to understand and navigate, and to be in line with best practices. B, edit and update language for clarity, consistency, and legality. C, amend incomplete or outdated provisions consistent with state law. D, move all administrative procedures from various sections into a standalone companion document for the Planning Board and Zoning Board of Appeals, so that it can be more easily maintained and amended going forward. Two, Section 2 Site Plan Approval. 2.6.2 applicability. B, minor site plan review by the Development Review Team. Add minor site plan reviews to streamline the permitting process for smaller developments, while still requiring staff review. Town staff can forward to Planning Board if unique circumstances are presented. Three, Section 3, Establishment of Districts and Related Map Amendments. A, change zoning of specified split lots so that parcels fall within one zoning district, remove orphan lots. B, establish the central core as a use zoning district instead of an overlay district, and expand the district to include specified lots as shown on map entitled "Proposed Central Core District Zoning Amendment, Southbridge, Massachusetts," dated August 27, 2018, and incorporated into townwide map entitled "Proposed Zoning Changes, Southbridge, Massachusetts," dated August 27, 2018. C, change the zoning district of specified lots within the north-central Foster Street area from two-family residential to office research, heavy industry to office research, general business to office research, heavy industry to general business, as shown on map entitled "North-Central Foster Street Area Zoning Amendment, Southbridge, Massachusetts," dated August 30, 2018, and incorporated into townwide map entitled "Proposed Zoning Changes, Southbridge, Massachusetts," dated August 27, 2018. D, change the zoning district of specified lots within the Dennison Cross Road and Old South Road area from two-family residential to residence one, as shown on map entitled "Dennison Cross Road and Old South Road Zoning Amendment, Southbridge, Massachusetts," dated August 27, 2018, and incorporated into townwide map entitled "Proposed Zoning Changes, Southbridge, Mass., Massachusetts," dated August 27, 2018. E, change the zoning district of specified lots along Old North Woodstock Road from two-family residential to residence one, shown on map entitled "Old North Woodstock Road Zoning Amendment, Southbridge, Massachusetts," dated August 27, 2018, and incorporated into townwide map entitled "Proposed Zoning Changes, Southbridge, Massachusetts," dated August 27, 2018. F, change the zoning districts of specified lots townwide to eliminate non-uniformities with surrounding districts, consistent with Mass. General Law Chapter 40A, Section 4, and renaming districts from single-family residential to residence one, two-family residential to residence two, multi-family residential to residence three, light industry to office research, and heavy industry to manufacturing, eliminating Business Opportunity District as shown on map entitled "Proposed Zoning Changes, Southbridge, Massachusetts," dated August 27, 2018.
Thank you, Councilor Nash. Councilor Daniel?
Item 4. Section 4, Use Regulations. A, improve the table of uses for ease of reading and clarity. B, allow all as-of-right uses in the central core without the need for a special permit in order to be consistent with Massachusetts State Zoning Act. C, allow agricultural-related uses as-of-right in certain districts to support local food production and consumption, among other goals. D, to address eyesore of multiple cars on front lawns, verbiage was added in 4.2D to read "except where otherwise provided in this bylaw, and except in the case of a licensed dealer in junk or used automobiles, it shall be prohibited to park or keep more than two motor vehicles or trailers that are unregistered or without a valid inspection sticker." Five, Section 5, Dimensional Regulations. 5.1, Schedule of Dimensional and Density Regulations. Update dimensional regulations to be tailored to the needs and character of the district and the goals of the town. This will encourage the redevelopment of small lots in the central core district and in other districts that were previously undeveloped due to their size. The minimum lot size for all uses in every residential district is currently 22,500 square feet or more, half an acre. The minimum lot size for non-residential zoning with non-residential uses is 10,000 square feet currently. The proposed changes are as follows. There follows a detailed chart. Districts. Single-family, R1, no change in minimum lot size. Two-family, R2, 12,500 square feet. Multi-family, R3, 15,000 square feet, plus 2,500 square feet for each unit over three. Central core. Multi-family use, 10,000 square feet. Mixed use, 5,000 square feet. All other uses, 5,000 square feet. Retail business and general business. All uses, 10,000 square feet. Mixed use, 10,000 square feet. Office research and manufacturing. Any allowed use, 40,000 squared, square feet. Existing sewer, multi-family or other permitted residential use, 25,000 square feet, plus 2,500 square feet for each unit over three. All other uses, 25,000 square feet. Six. Section 6, Non-Conforming Uses and Structures. Update to clarify definitions of non-conforming uses and abandoned properties. Seven. Section 7, General Regulations. 7.1, Off-Street Parking and Loading. Change parking regulations to allow for less parking spaces when appropriate by special permit. Eight. Section 8, Special Regulations. A, 8.3, Senior Residential Development. Add senior residential development regulations that provide for flexibility in dimensional regulations for these developments. B, 8.4, Home Occupation. Add regulations to enable these uses by right, instead of by special permit, if they fall within certain criteria. C, Insert Medical Marijuana Bylaw Approved by Town Council on September 10, 2018. Nine. Section 10, Definitions. Move definitions of all terms to this one section, and update whenever, wherever needed to include standard, unambiguous language, consistent with current law. The proposed zoning bylaw and map will continue to be available for review in Town Hall, 41 Elm Street, at the Town Clerk's Office, the Town Manager's Office, and the Economic Development and Planning Department. Copies will also be available to review at the Jacob Edwards Library at 236 Main Street, and the Southbridge Police Department, 1 Mechanic Street. The town's website's welcome page has a direct link to the hearing draft and map as well.
Thank you. That's the second reading. Any comments? Any comments? Just a question for Ken. Ken, have you received any feedback based on the hearing so far?
No, I have not. But as you recall, at the last meeting, there was a comment from a citizen looking into that. That property is actually not being part of the, is not part of that zone change, so that will remain R2.
Okay. Thank you. So again, feel free, for the public, to review those documents. The final reading will be next Monday night, November 5.
Actually, in order for our consultant to be there, we actually have suggested placing that on the 26th agenda, just for our consultant to be present, just in case there are any, you know, questions before the council would take a vote.
Well, we could do the third reading next week and then have the vote on the 26th.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You just, I was wondering if we, I mean, when we do readings, they're supposed to be consecutive, I thought.
Yeah, so I would suggest we'll keep it, the third weekend, the third reading will be next week. We'll let people know that if any additional comment, that'll give plenty of time for any comment period, any changes that they wish to solicit, and then we can have the final vote on the 26th.
Okay.
That gives plenty of time for comments, so in the matter of transparency, there should be no issues, right? You agree? Everybody? Counsel Adams?
This is the 19th of November.
26th.
The 26th.
26th. That's how the calendar worked out.
The Monday after Thanksgiving.
Because it's Thanksgiving week, I did not schedule the meeting for that week.
24 days before Christmas.
And the 12th is Veterans Day. So that's why we have that gap. Okay? I know there's quite a gap, so everybody can have a little break for a little bit for all the hard work that we've been doing for the last four, five months. So, okay. Thank you, Ken. Counsel's forum. Counsel Manna, you want to start, huh?
Oh, sure.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. So there's something I just want to address to the council. I'm sure you got it all in your packet. It was a Facebook post. I am human. I am also a private person. I have a private Facebook page, and I have a town council Facebook page. And a friend posted something on his Facebook page. It was actually a news story of a painting that was uncovered in a cave of a slave from 3,000 years ago. And somebody made the comment about now Justice Kavanaugh, and they thought it was him in the painting, jokingly. And so I said in the comment, I was there. I saw that. So I don't know why. I kind of think I know why you guys got this in your packets, but by any means, it wasn't, I wasn't making fun of any, any person that made any accusations. I just like, it just baffled me, and I kind of chuckled, too, at it as to why, and it was sent anonymously, too. And, you know, when people send things anonymously, it kind of has no teeth to it. If you want to do something like that, put your name to it. I did nothing wrong, but I'm sure, I don't know if you guys had any questions about it or anything, so I just want, just put it out there. Yeah, 3,000 years ago, I was there. I saw, I witnessed the painting being done. Yeah, okay, so that's all. It was, it was just a joke, and it was a personal joke between me and some friends. So, and that's, that's kind of it on that. And beware the trick-or-treaters on Wednesday night. We got the Horribles Parade and all the little trick-or-treaters going around door-knocking. Just be careful of them when you're out there. And daylight savings time, November 4th. Our clocks go back an hour, so we actually gain an hour's sleep. Thank God for that. And that is all. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Nash?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Personally, I didn't have an issue with what was provided to us when it came to Counselor Manna's personal Facebook page. It went straight into the file. So I get it. If people want to take issue with that, they probably have issue with my posting food on Facebook. But tonight, I'd like to thank council chair and town manager for asking me to participate in the review of the RF piece, for drafting of the documents for the wastewater treatment operations contract. I will do my best, given my years of experience and complete objectivity going forward, to work with Heather, and Ron, and Karen, and Matt, to do our diligence to make sure that any part that I play and that they play is absolutely in the best interest of the town. That's what you'd all expect, and that's what you'd get from every single one of us. Also, please do be careful on Halloween. I live out in the woods. I don't think I've ever had a trick-or-treater, but I'll be downtown with lots of other people, I'm sure, this year, and I know that Main Street, all the way down to the Rotary and other areas can be quite congested, and people don't always see pedestrians, so please drive slowly, be on the lookout. Don't move the markers in front of Cumberland Farms to drive down through the parking spaces. Don't pass people at those lights. I know that the police department works hard and does a great job, but those signs seem to be moving on their own quite frequently. I know them downtown three, four, five, 10 times a day. Luckily, they always end up back in place. Short of that, I think that I'm just going to leave it at that for this wonderful evening, and I'll see you all tomorrow night at PPP, because we have some pretty important agenda items to discuss regarding some important positions. Thank you.
Counsel DePietro?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Nothing for you this evening.
Thank you. Counsel Morales?
I want to say as well, thank you.
Counsel Adams?
Hey, Mr. Chair, just two quick things. SPP, thank you for the invite the other day for the holiday vision to see what was happening up there. And again, it's on my Facebook page. Anybody want to volunteer to help them out? It's up there. I will be going out on the second to actually help load the trucks, some of the trucks. Also, I want to thank the town manager for pushing the application through for the pavement improvement process. I'll be posting something here soon about that, but I want to thank you for getting that $28,000 so we can actually start the process up again. So I appreciate it. Thank you, Ron. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Counsel O'Clare?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of things. Right now, I have a temporary different phone number than what is on the website, and that phone number for everyone is (508) 534-8265. I'd just like to remind everybody to get out there and vote. We've got some early voting going on this week. It ends on Saturday, yeah, Saturday, and then Sunday and Monday, there is no early voting, so it doesn't go straight up until Tuesday, the 6th, on the election. So if you need to, get out there this week and vote. Otherwise, hope to see everybody on the 6th. There's going to be some shuttle services from 50 Central Street and the Village Drive down at the Brookside Terrace apartment complex, and Therese Ave, where TAGS is. I know that the details on that are being worked out right now, but the intention is to have a shuttle going back and forth to some of those places, to the community center. And if you would like details, at this point, I don't want to erroneously give them out, so that phone number that I just gave, again, it is (508) 534-8265. You can give me a call, and I can let anybody who's interested know the rest of the details on that. Aside from that, everyone have a great week.
Thank you. Counsel Daniel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to take a moment to offer my deepest condolences to Counselor Adams on the loss of his Los Angeles Dodgers. Counsel Adams is a Southern California boy, and I think you picked the wrong horse. So congratulations to the Red Sox, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Counsel Steves?
Counsel O'Clare was going to, said pretty much what I was going to say about getting out to vote, so other than that, I didn't have anything else to say. We do have, the next meeting is going to be Monday here on November 5th, here in the chambers, at 10:00.
Thank you. Item 22, Vote to Enter an Executive Session in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21, Subsection 3, to, I'm sorry, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation if discussion in the open session will have a detrimental effect on the position of the government's litigation position if the chair so declares interadjourned. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Roll call.
Counsel Daniel?
Yes.
Counsel DePietro?
Yes.
Counsel Jovan?
Yes.
Counsel Manna?
Yes.
Counsel Morales?
No.
No? Oh, well, you can still say.
Okay, yes.
Thank you.
Counsel Nash?
Yes.
Counsel Steves?
Yes.
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Counsel O'Clare?
Yes.
Thank you.